I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask the board to approve the agenda for this evening, I need to add an appointment or ask the board to vote on an appointment of Beverly Miller as clerk pro tem tonight in Elaine's absence. So what I'd like a vote on is the following resolution resolved at the Board of Education of the Irvington School District, appoint Beverly Miller as clerk pro tem for the March 13th, 2014 work session slash special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Okay, now we'd like to begin the work session and the first part is a continuation of our discussion of the Fields Project Committee's recommendation that were presented a few days ago.
Good evening and thank you. As everyone should recall, just two days ago, we, three days ago, had a wonderful meeting from our Fields Project Committee which submitted their report to the Board of Education. And as we anticipate some continued dialogue with respect to the recommendations, I thought it was valuable to recap their five recommendations. And then in doing so, I wanted to provide a little bit of follow-up on a couple of questions that were posed on Monday evening. The committee had five different charges, five questions they had to answer, and the first was pertaining to East Field and whether or not we should look at expanding East Field, maintaining a grass playing surface, or installing artificial turf. And in doing so, the committee, after much deliberation and research, determined that their preference would be to maintain a natural grass field. This field, as recommended, would provide a one-foot cap over the existing turf to provide a two-foot barrier between the construction debris that is in place. The field would be entirely in grass, per the recommendation, with no artificial turf. There would be no, by design, no tree removal and certainly the fewest number of trucks that would impact our community by bringing material in and out of the construction site. The second charge focused on Mizarros Field and trying to determine the best way to remedy the conditions there. And there was consideration looking at natural grass as well as artificial surfaces. And at the end of the day, the committee determined that it was in the best interest of the community and its programs to replace the existing field with an artificial turf field, as you can see in a vote of seven to three. And in doing so, they also had a preference that the board consider an organic infill or a hybrid infill. The third question was about lights, whether lights should be considered at any of the facilities. And in doing so, the committee felt strongly that lights should not be a consideration at this point in time with a nine to one vote. Ole track was the fourth question they were charged with answering, and the determination here was to evaluate whether or not the track should be replaced as is or if there should be a change in the footprint or the options. And the committee felt unanimously that it should be replaced as is. There was review and consideration, looking at possibilities of expanding the track to make a longer sprint lane or to make it a wider track with more running lanes, but it was determined that there was too much excavation and work that was needed. It would not be financially viable to do this. So the belief is that the track should be replaced as is. The other questions that were on the table was certainly an open-ended charge, to consider what other improvements should be made to the area. And there certainly was a real focus on field maintenance, but beyond that, there were some specifics and finances that impact us today. And it was looking at making the striping of the field wider at Mizarros to accommodate official, large-sized men's lacrosse and soccer fields, adding lacrosse netting, which would be a portable netting that would be installed at the ends of the field for lacrosse to keep balls from flying off the field and potentially injuring bystanders. Also looking at the installation of more bleachers for the home side of the field and then storage for maintenance equipment at Mizarros Field. So in looking at those recommendations following the discussion, our initial analysis of these, and this is looking to our resource and land, our engineering firm, it is determined that lights at Mizarros, even though not recommended, but the question was asked, would be approximately $250,000. The installation of lacrosse netting at the ends of the field would be $30,000. A storage shed for maintenance equipment would be $10,000. However, we do want to explore the possibility of expanding the existing tower to see if we can make better use of that space. We've determined that the existing space, the small garage there, does not accommodate all of our needs as it is, so the storage of additional field maintenance equipment would be a challenge. If we were to look to install an additional section of bleachers, the work and the purchase of materials involved there would cost approximately $25,000. There was also some conversation about looking at the maintenance of, and this is upper dows, and I apologize, should actually be lower dows, where there is no irrigation. So when we look at the fields, many of our fields, we know there's maintenance needs and certainly by being able to apply water on a regular basis, we'll be able to maintain healthier turf, but there's nothing out at lower dows at this point in time. So in what we're looking at here is not necessarily installing an irrigation system with sprinklers that would rise from the ground, but running water lines out to the field. And we'd be able to install either aerial sprinklers or a water cannon. And a water cannon is essentially a big sprinkler that runs on water pressure that follows a cable that you'd plant in the ground, and over time, with the use of the water pressure, it moves across the field with a big aerial sprinkler that would irrigate the field. There's an asterisk next to this because we would have to have an assessment of the existing water lines and water pressure to see what would have to be possible. This is a number that could fluctuate based upon that evaluation. I also wanted to highlight the costs associated with the proposed modifications or the proposed renovations to our fields. So when we look at East Field, we can see we had a cost that we discussed going back earlier this week of just over $1.2 million. Ms. Miller, working with land, was able to find a small savings, but a savings of $5,000, and that is through land reducing their fees to design and manage the oversight to some of the construction related to that. In the Mizarros Field estimate, which also includes Ole Track, we're looking at a figure just shy of $1.8 million. And you can see our grand total for the cost of the projects is $3,8853.
Yes? I know, I think in your blast, you said there'd be time for public comment. Is there anybody in the public that has any questions on what they just heard? Hearing none. Anything, I know the board had time to talk about this, I guess when I was out the last meeting. Is there anything from the update that you have questions on?
Oh, yeah. There might have been something. The storage, this might be a minor issue, but are you, are we thinking of then building a separate freestand? I just missed this. I know you said it, a separate freestanding storage shed somewhere out by Mizarros.
So what the consideration here, and just to clarify again and apologize for being redundant, but to be able to store maintenance equipment that would be necessary to groom an artificial turf field, there currently, we have the tower that stands next to the field. There's a small garage space, but that is primarily used already for storage of track equipment, and it's really beyond capacity at this point in time. So we haven't had the opportunity to be able to look at it from an engineering and architectural standpoint, if it's practical and feasible to be able to add in addition onto that where we could actually build an additional garage space to store this equipment. So in the interim, what we've looked at was actually constructing or purchasing a standalone shed, putting a concrete slab foundation down and setting a shed off to the side of the field and would identify, obviously, a safe location, so it would not be a hazard for our students or community members.
I guess we have no other questions. I know I missed, I've been traveling, I missed the prior meeting on this. I just want to personally, and I'm sure the board did, but just personally thank the Fields Project Committee, who I wish were here, for their work.
Deb's here.
Oh, Deb, hey, you're doing it, Deb. Sorry, Deb.
You're hidden.
I'm sorry, Deb. I thought it was a wonderful work product, and it was great to see members from the community with divergent views on grass versus turf, et cetera, et cetera, come together and really come up with a plan that directs the board as to how the community feels. You know, ultimately, we're trying to put together a bond referendum that we feel is in the best interest of the district, but ultimately, we're not the ones who voted in, it's the community. So I think that the work that the projects in the Fields Committee did is a long step to getting that done. So thank you very much, and please pass along my thanks to everybody on the committee. I guess moving on to our next, that is, I'd like to turn it over to the Buildings and Grounds Committee Representatives, Mr. Whitney and Mrs. Kashkin. Some would say Steve Jobs and Mrs. Kashkin, for the facilities recommendations this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Very nice. I only wish I was worth, you know, $30 billion. But if I was worth that by then, I was Steve Jobs, I'd be dead. So it's really not.
And you donate the fields.
That's right.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to start off first by thanking Deb Hargraves and the audience for the amazing presentation on the Fields Project Committee. We have some tall shoes, some big shoes to fill tonight in doing this presentation, but we've had experts behind us the whole way, and I want to acknowledge them as well. We have Rich and Peter here from land. Thank you for coming tonight. And without them, we could not have done this, any of this work, because they have done yeoman's work, thorough work, multiple revisions. Maria and I have harassed them at every chance we can, because that's how we treat our vendors. But seriously, we've had a real.
It's the Irvington Way, though.
It is. Long tradition of harassing vendors. But it's been a very iterative process, and that takes time and work, and we thank you for that. And I also want to acknowledge Bev Miller, our Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations, and Gary Knowles, our Director of Facilities, because our committee is made up of us and Maria and myself, and we couldn't do without them. They are also subject matter experts. So we will probably be turning over certain questions to them tonight, because Maria and I are definitely not experts in facilities, although I feel much more knowledgeable about it after going through the last couple of months. So on with our presentation. We have probably a bit over an hour, maybe an hour and a half to get through. Maybe with fewer questions, we'll be done sooner, but we do have about 16 projects to describe in detail, and assuming that each project takes, you know, about three minutes, it's going to be about 45 minutes for the bulk of our presentation. And we have 29 slides to get through, so we have a lot to get through in the next hour and a half. Starting with the objectives of our task tonight, the first and foremost is to provide the board and the community with a thorough understanding of the projects that we've been working on since last fall, so that everybody understands what the cost is, the rationale, and how we came up with our lists that we're recommending for tonight and for possible inclusion in the bond referendum. And then we'd like to get some direction from the board as to which project should be included in the final proposal. And we know for, you know, certain board members, a lot of this is going to be new tonight, so we're not saying, you know, absolute ironclad, that's not what we're looking for. Getting direction would be nice, so giving us your comments as to what you think is a valuable thing for us to pursue and what's not. So as I said, our B&amp;G Committee, the Buildings and Grounds Committee, it's a regular part of the board. We were assigned, I guess, in July last year when the new board convened, and it's a regular committee, like the Curriculum Committee and a Finance Committee. And it's made up of Maria and myself this year, and of course, Dr. Harrison, Ms. Miller, and Mr. Knowles. And that is our committee. We meet every two weeks, and we report back to the board, usually in the form of minutes, when something substantive has happened. And generally speaking, that has been the case over the last couple of months, because we've been working on these projects since November. We've been, we started with a list of needs that I think has come originally from the five-year capital project that we've had on the books for quite some time, and then has been updated by Gary and Bev over time. And so that's really what formed the basis of the beginning of our work, was this list of needs, to begin the process of working with land to create estimates and to really detail out the work that needs to be done. In February, we really started digging into the prices of everything and attempted to start prioritizing things. And at that time also, we did several walkthroughs to understand exactly what they were proposing and what was the challenge or the problem that we were trying to solve in the campus or at the building. This just gives another kind of view as to what that process was. We started with a list of projects. We got an initial job spec and estimate from land. We reviewed it. We then had a revised spec from land specification. We did a site visit, meaning we literally walked around here and kind of tried to think through exactly how the recommendation would solve the problem and what the potential issues were for a particular project. And then land would go back and revise the specs again. By the way, this was particularly, this sort of iterative nature was particularly useful when we were looking at the Dow's Lane project, which is moving the district offices into Dow's Lane. We really had to spend a lot of time looking at the space and understanding exactly what would happen. So finally, at the end, when we got all the details together, we prioritized, and then we got final estimates from land. Just want to point out, too, that land's estimates include all the subcontractor materials, the hours, land's project management fee, and a contingency. And generally, land's fee is 5% to 7% of the total job cost. It varies by project. I actually don't recall whether, presumably, the larger number is, the larger percentage is for the smaller project and the smaller, or is it really based on the amount of work that they have to do?
Based on the amount of work?
Yeah, okay. So we're talking about capital projects, and because we've talked about these in the past, I thought we'd start off with a definition of what a capital project is. Fundamentally, it's about improving our district assets or infrastructure. If it's something that is adding or changing what we're, how our buildings or pieces of our buildings work, we have to get SED approval, and that's when it becomes a quote-unquote "capital project." And that generally speaking, a capital project has a lifespan of more than 15 years, so that we're really trying to exclude so-called repairs, painting being a repair or fixing a broken window is a repair. Those are obviously not capital projects. Now, where we have some flexibility is really in defining how we fund our capital projects. Capital projects don't have to be borrowed against. We can fund them through our capital, pardon me, through our operating fund. We can fund them out of our budget that we create every year. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to go to a bond referendum to be a capital project or to get the funding. As I said, I really should say, all capital projects require SED approval. And as I said, the project that is going to be borrowed against has to be approved by the voters in a bond referendum. So these are the kind of elements of a capital project, and I hope that clears up some previous questions that we've had as a board. We have tonight, for your consideration, 16 projects. Half are related to energy-saving projects. Two are preemptive in nature, and by preemptive, that means that if we do the work now, then we won't have to do it later at greater cost. The nature of a preemptive project is we anticipate that the thing will fail at some point, and that if we fix it now, if we replace it now, it will cost us less money than if it fails entirely. Not to mention the fact that if something fails, depending on what it is, that can cause hardship, if it's a roof or if it's a structure of any nature. Quality of life, meaning the quality of life for our students, we have four projects which we anticipate would actually improve the quality of life for our students. And then there are two projects related to safety. They are not significant safety issues. Anything that was a significant safety issue, we would obviously pay for right away. We wouldn't wait to put it into a bond referendum, obviously. We did not attempt to prioritize the projects in ranked order. We thought that would take too long, and we'd spend too much time trying to figure out the exact metrics for ranking something one versus three. So we really just separated things into two tiers, recommended and not recommended. This is the list of projects. We're going to go through these in detail, but this just gives you the high-level look of what we're talking about. All 16 projects add up to $2.6 million in the aggregate cost for all the work that would be done for all 16 projects. But we, as I said, separated them into two tiers. The first tier sum is just about $2 million, and the second tier sum is just under $600,000. And so we're going to spend most of our time talking about Tier One. We do have individual slides on Tier Two, because there may be some two-tier, Tier Two projects that the whole board would like to see us fund through and make them Tier One So we're going to get into the details now. I think I'm ahead of schedule, because I think I left 10 minutes for those previous slides, so now we're going to get into the details. So please feel free or to ask questions if you don't understand what these individual projects are.
You want us to ask questions as you go?
Yeah, please. Because on these detail pages.
On the project?
Yeah.
Clarifying, basically clarifying.
Exactly, yeah. Yep. So project number one is to rewire the campus lights, meaning the structure we're in here. The middle school and the high school buildings do not have lights that can be turned off. They have to be turned off, they cannot be turned off manually. We've probably all noticed this before, that when you're driving by on Broadway in the evening, you look up and you say, wow, what is that really bright building up there? Well, that's our high school. And it seems like it's always lit up like a candle, and that obviously costs us money. I don't know why it ended up that way. Maybe Gary or Bev, you could expound a pound why someone would wire a building so that you can't turn out the lights, but.
I don't know. Right.
I do have, maybe it's a clarifying question. Does that mean literally the lights, when you say they can't, they can't be turned off manually, I mean, they can be turned off something, some other way, or is there, are they literally on 24/7 year-round?
Considered emergency lighting. So yes, they are.
Every classroom light and every bathroom light and everything is on?
Several classroom spaces, but more halls and mechanical rooms have lights on.
That's what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Halls and mechanical, the classroom lights and all that get turned off?
Correct.
Except for. And gyms?
Music wing.
Except for the music wing.
Okay. So obviously, this is a energy-saving project. It's very wasteful to leave lights on all the time. We would save an estimated $6,325 a year, about 45% of our total lighting cost, if we can turn off our lights more easily with this rewiring project.
The energy savings numbers, who estimated those? Land? Okay.
We did it. We did it at land. We did it based on your utility bills and hours of operation.
There's actually a fair amount of detail behind that, which we'd be happy to share with you. We didn't go through it, because each project has its own set of metrics around that.
But anyway, those would be current costs of energy?
Yes.
Yep. When we do estimates, as you saw, because you saw the presentation ahead of time, we did an estimate of the energy savings over the 15-year life of the bond, because if you're going to bond something and pay, you know, interest rates, you can, you need to assume, that's the negative, right, that we're paying for something, big projects right now, and we're bonding it and paying interest rates. So over 15 years, you can actually count the savings that you're going to get against that, because the energy costs are going to go up each year.
Right. But you're saying, so the savings you're saying is $6,000.
That's just, that's just the first.
For year one.
That's just year one.
So you're.
You'll see the calculation later on about how it totals out. Second project is converting the Main Street school gym lighting to LED. So this is the lighting sodium halide in the gym that makes everybody look green when they are in that gym. The lights date from 1993. The sodium halide is really an outdated technology in terms of lighting. It's expensive from an energy standpoint, and just like our campus situation, the lights cannot be turned on or off quickly. There is a warm-up time, is that right? Yeah. So that is a, because of the warm-up time, that tends to be an inhibitor for turning off the lights. Presumably, if somebody isn't going to walk out of the room and flip off the lights, if you know it's going to take 20 minutes or so for them to come back on. So that's a problem with sodium halide lights. So this project is proposing converting them over to LED, which is obviously a much more modern lighting technology. So the savings here is about $3,435 a year, or 69% of the total annual lighting cost. I would say there's also a quality of life intangible improvement, because I think frankly, for the kids who have to play in that gym with that really unnatural horrendous light, I would say that's a small quality of life improvement. And obviously, it reduces our carbon footprint if we're going to reduce the energy. Yes, Robin?
I guess it's a question for most of these, and maybe you could just comment as you're going through, but I guess my question is, if this wasn't up, like, all of these things have a lifespan, and then I'm assuming they're going to have to be replaced at some point. So when you're looking at these, like, I'm just kind of curious as to where we are in the lifespan. Like, if you're going to say the campus lights have been around a long time, they're going to go soon rather than later, I just, just to get a sense, I mean, obviously not exact, but I'd be curious on most of these, where we are in the lifespan of the existing situation.
I don't think I could begin to answer that question, but Gary, Peter, do you want to give a shot?
Well, the, most of your fixtures, like the campus lighting, it's towards the middle, towards the middle and in the gradual end of its lifespan. A fixture lasts 15, 20 years. The Main Street gym lighting is 1993. The technology, the lighting there is outdated. So by replacing it now makes sense. You could be replacing it in five years. We don't know. There's not, there's no set number of a lifespan, for example, of the light fixtures.
Right, but I guess I truly don't know if we're talking five years or 50 years. I just have no idea.
No, it's, there isn't, and the number could be variable. They could last another 10 years, another 15 years, but you're not improving the, your cost savings in energy.
I mean, I think you're asking, is now the right time to be doing it? I mean, it's either, no, you're not asking.
No, I'm asking, oh, can I clarify my question? I think what I'm asking is, you know, like, when you buy a product, it has a warranty, and you'd say, okay, on average, this, you know, your boiler is going to last 10 years in your house. Okay, might last more, might last less, but 10 years average. So I'm thinking when you put in each of these projects, there was some estimate of life, and I'm just curious if we're closer to the end or in the middle? And not exactly, but, you know, because I guess it would factor into my decision. Like, if you're saying, well, you know, really, we're very close to the beginning, and in terms of a warranty, we have a long way to go, then that might alter how I prioritize something personally.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think based on what Peter said, 1993, it's 20 years, so it sounds like it's probably reaching the end of its life, right?
Yeah.
I think the better analogy may be, as opposed to the thing that has a useful life, is to, you're driving around a 1943 car, and, you know, that car may last you another 20 years, but at the same time, you're probably getting four miles to the gallon on the car versus the cost savings you might get by upgrading to a newer car.
They're all data points. I'm just asking for an additional data point, but yes, yeah, you know, one more in that yes, in that analogy.
The other part of it is, if these things, I have no understanding of light fix, the gym light fix, if they were, if they come to the end of their life for some reason, and we'd have, we can't really replace just one at a time with an LED, right? So we just have, at some point, it becomes, if we want to replace them with LEDs, I guess we probably have to do them all.
Well, the, well, the light bulbs obviously can be replaced, and LED lights are.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I don't even know, are they, would they fit in the same sort of fixture and they're just different?
No, no. The LED fixture has a specific ballast that the light bulb works off of and you need a fixture for that ballast. So, if you were replacing, let's say, the frame, you have to replace the ballast for the LED fixture. And to do it one at a time really doesn't make sense. It's more cost-effective or from an energy standpoint to replace them all at the same time.
Well, it's always more cost-effective to replace them because they use less energy, right?
Correct. So, these, I mean, the ideas with these new lighting fixtures, the motivation was definitely to save energy. And you'll see at the end, the savings was more significant, I think, than we anticipated even when we started the, started the project.
Okay, one more, sorry, one more clarifying. The cost you have down there, those aren't net of energy cost savings or anything?
These are not. That's not net.
Gross cost.
The net numbers are at the end. I mean, we, you know, you're right, I could have netted, we could have netted.
No, it's, my feeling is it's clearer this way. You can see, see the nuts and bolts. It's nice.
Okay. So, we're also contemplating a similar project at Dow's Lane where the sodium halide fixtures are as the same age? Gary, I forgot. Dow's Lane, uh...
Fluorescence now. Yeah. Sodium's in there? The sodiums.
So, they're a little bit newer, right?
So, you say they're not sodium halide?
They are.
They are. 1999.
Same exact issue as the Main Street School gym. The savings is less, $1,269. Is that because the gym is smaller?
There's, yes, there's less fixtures in there and there's a little bit more work involved in, because of the configuration of the ceiling.
That's the cost side, right? Yeah. So, the cost side, the, there is, the fixtures in the Dow's Lane gym are...
Recced into the ceiling.
So, there will be some demolition to get them out and that's why...
Some patching of the ceiling when we put the new ones in.
I guess if we, you know, when we look at this, now that I think about it, is if our cost is $76,000 in the Main Street School gym with a $3,400, you know, energy savings, this is obviously not quite as attractive because it's $100,000 with only $1,200 in savings. But again, the quality-of-life issue is also there as well, meaning that the light quality is quite unpleasant in that building, in that gym. Okay. The famous Univents. We've been talking about Univents for a long time. I've started seeing Univents in my sleep. So, Univents and HVAC controls at Dow's Lane essentially control the heating and the airflow in that building. And unfortunately, they, they're old. They date to 1955, originally, the original installation. And there's quite a few of them, which is why the, quite a few Univents, and that's why the project is so expensive. I actually brought the detail up here because I thought someone would ask. I think there's 30 Univents that have to be replaced, is that right? 20. That's what it says. One per classroom. Wow, that's really difficult math, isn't it? So, they cannot be repaired due to their age and complexity. And also, the current HVAC controls are non-functional and that means that this is one of the, one of the buildings that Gary and his team have to manually control. And it's been a tough winter for them because they've been manually controlling a lot of different buildings here and this is one of them. The estimated annual energy savings is 5,000. Now, this is a conservative estimate because of the complexity of what we're contemplating here. We took a 10% estimate. We did not have land do that estimate. We basically said, we need to, we know there's some cost savings. We just don't know whether it's 30, 20, or 10, so we took a very conservative number. Gary, would you like to elaborate at all about, you know, the, the problem with the HVAC controls here? I think, you know, you're the guy that has to man the system here. I think it'd be good to hear from you.
In each classroom, you have the Univents and in each Univent, there are different parts, actuators that actually open and close the, the heating valves as well as the fresh air dampers. We've changed in just about every classroom over the past 10 years or so, we've changed those actuators and any parts that, that needed to be changed. We still have issues with the units overheating or not heating at all. And Bev, Chris, and any teacher in Dow's Lane can tell you that when they come in in the morning, they may be coming into a room that's overheated or too cold. So, our custodial staff is spending a lot of time just chasing these and putting Band-Aids on these units at these classroom spaces. They run off a pneumatic system. They're run by compressors which feed the thermostats in each classroom. In some areas, they just don't work, they just don't tie in together. So, on a 50-degree day, if we don't shut the boilers down, those rooms stay hot all day. So, that's the issue we have at Dow's Lane.
So, is it safe to say that this project combined with the other project, which is coming up, which is replacing the boiler controls, that together we will have classrooms that are like with programmable thermostats?
We would be able to monitor what's going on and better serve those classrooms.
Right.
But with something like this, would we do that over the summer?
The bulk of the work, yes. The Univents, yes.
So, we wouldn't have to take the kids out of the classrooms?
Right.
To do this project, we try to work around their schedule?
The controls, you may be able to do evenings, but the Univents themselves, you would have to do over the summer.
Questions? It's a big-ticket item. Again, it's, the price per unit is like 15,000? Yes. So, each Univent is 15,000? Or each, it's not a Univent anymore, right? It'd be a replacement of the Univent, right?
Well, is it an option? Do they, none of them work or is it just that they're kind of, I'm just wondering if it's an option to do some of them and kind of let it go?
They're well past their lifespan.
But does that mean that they don't, none of them work?
They don't work properly.
43 cars passed its lifespan too, but it might still work. Even if they didn't make cars in 43, but that's another issue. Yeah. So, yeah, with them all. I'm just wondering if there's another, okay.
Okay. So, this is the boiler controls that I was speaking about and actually, I guess boiler controls are at Main Street School and here at the campus, not at Dow's Lane. Right?
Dow's Lane has its own boiler control.
Right.
That was in the cost estimate.
Yeah, we've done those, haven't we? We did, we've already done the boiler controls.
Yeah, we did the boiler controls at Dow's Lane, I thought, right?
Yeah, they're already done.
Right.
We did it traps.
Yeah. Okay.
But that ties in with...
Yeah. Right.
So, this is about the boiler controls at the campus and at Main Street School. Current boiler controls date from 93 and 2003. Obviously, Main Street School, much older than the campus, but they have not been working properly for many years. Again, evidence again in this winter. And the custodians have to manually control the boilers. And I guess you've been attempting to fix things, but they are really beyond repair at this point. So, the benefit here is energy savings, not to mention better use of our custodial time. The savings result from the fact that the custodial staff would be able to set programmable schedules, shut down air handlers to unoccupied spaces. Again, this is important from a quality-of-life standpoint. Some classrooms here are overheated and some are actually quite cold. So cold that pipes will burst, I guess, right? Yeah, they have burst. So, the expected annuals, energy savings here is significant and I guess this looks like a very nice return on investment because $78,000 cost with an $18,600 energy savings. But I guess that's because these buildings are bid and changing the boiler controls out really does improve the efficiency.
Quick question. Campus is high school or is it high school, middle school? Both?
A small part of the high school, but it's the newer buildings.
Really?
More newer buildings and this, this space.
Really? And that's not part of, that wasn't part of the master plan or we just give up on the master plan? We've just got to fix it?
Yes, John?
So, you said it's, sorry, it's, well, the campus is mostly not the high school. It's everything else, which is new, relatively new, right? That building is what, 12 years old? Something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And how is it that a building, that controls that are, what are we going to do differently, I guess, this time around so we don't have 11 years from now, controls that don't work? Are we, are we getting something better or, because it doesn't give me a lot of confidence that an 11-year-old set of controls don't work?
Well, I can just share my experience here with you. That's all I can do.
Bring your mic up a little closer, Gary.
In 2003, we opened these new buildings. That 2003, 2004 winter was similar to what we just went through this year. That, that year, we lost several coils in the air handlers. We, we had pipe bursts where we lost classroom space and we're trying to avoid that now. So, we've been looking into some sort of control that we can monitor, not just from here, but from home, just to make sure things are good here. If one coil goes throughout, throughout this campus, everything shuts down. And if we don't respond and take care of it quick enough, we may have to close down school for a period of time.
So, it's a, it's a, it's a control, it's a set of, whatever they are, controls that allow for more remote monitoring and that kind of thing that the old ones didn't have?
Correct.
Which is a separate issue from the fact that the old ones aren't.
What we were supposed to have?
Oh.
What we didn't get, what we were supposed to have.
Ah, okay.
So, the other, the other point too, just to keep in mind, is that the custodians are not only sort of managing things when they're here on, on the grounds, that's part of their job, but they've also had a 24-hour watch on our system here in order to ensure that things don't freeze up, shut down and freeze up.
To that we respond quickly enough.
Right. Right. So, that's cost us money to have that, which we did not build in here as a savings.
Overtime.
Yes. So, this is a project that's probably more familiar to most, most of us. I'm sure some of us are familiar with the idea of switching from oil to gas. Gas is more efficient and less expensive than oil, although I'm told that very recently gas has gone up just a bit. But it's, but so is oil, right? But it's definitely a cleaner energy and generally speaking, a cheaper energy. The benefit here is really all about the energy savings during this conversion. We save $25,000 a year if we go to gas from oil. And the, and the cost is $135,000. So, again, the savings is significant, cost is kind of in the middle of the, of the pack in terms of our projects. So, this is a project that definitely has a good return on investment.
Question?
Yes.
At Dow's Lane, don't our boilers have the ability to go from gas? We choose oil or gas?
Dow's Lane is only gas. This campus is oil or gas.
Okay. So, we're going to do this, will we have a choice or it's just gas?
If we do this in the Main Street, we'll have a choice.
We'll have a choice? Okay. Okay.
All right. Now, I'm going to introduce Maria, who, as you can tell, is quite sick. So, very brave of her to be here tonight, but it's a measure of her desire to see this thing through that she's here. So, over to you, Maria.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Project number seven is moving the district offices into Dow's Lane. This is the area that we kind of beat Peter up on. We challenged him in many ways about how to configure this space and minimize our costs. Currently, the district offices are falling apart and they need to be moved out of there for a variety of reasons. We tried to, which is the challenge we gave to Peter, to keep the current administration where they are and fit the district offices into Dow's Lane. Unfortunately, there are more people in the, in the district offices than there are in the administrative offices at Dow's Lane. So, Randy and his group would be moved to the middle of the school and Chris's, the entire district offices would move into the current space where the district offices are and upstairs where the second floor conference room, I don't even know what we call that room, that area up there. Part of the reason why, the driving factors of this cost is that because we're moving the offices and the nurses' office specifically, it needs to become ADA compliant and we also need to bring certain features in the current school up to fire code. So, those two factors also are what are driving this cost for $325,000. We also looked into possible rental space. There was one space for about just under $8,000 a month and it would entail some renovation to the space and the committee decided that that was not the best use of our funds. And replacing the district offices with another modular, obviously $1 million, that also does not make sense. Questions?
Okay. Quick question. Given that we see a lot of families moving here and I guess we're thinking that the population might be on the rise, I just wanted to ensure that will this max out the space at Dow's Lane or we still have space to handle if we need additional classrooms?
We still have additional space to move the kids into. And one of the rooms is not even, it's not even a classroom, it's a conference room. It was never intended to be a classroom, so we're not taking classroom space there.
Does this, does this cost include whatever it's going to cost to demolish the existing modulars and restore that ground to basically play ground type?
That's a good question.
That's a totally separate cost.
Totally separate.
We have to decide what kind of turf we want on that space.
Okay. Economy's a scale.
I'll donate the grass seed.
Larry Scheffel don't.
Believe me, I think you'd find people willing to help demolish that for nothing.
Have a demolishing party.
We could have a demolishing party. Hey, that's, that's an, that's a...
A fundraising idea.
Well, get some mallet and we could take, like, five bucks, you get to hit the...
I'm sure it would also be a great activity.
This is not that bad of an idea, actually.
Bonfire is good.
A bonfire would be good too.
In reality, we might, we might be able to sell the facilities because they are modulars. So, there's that possibility. We can sell them to offset those costs.
Wait, but you did say they were reaching the end of their useful life though, but we didn't say that on record, right, did we?
Well, if someone wants to buy it, a hunting cabin or something out of it, they could have...
It would be also a nice, but it would be, demolition could also be a nice third-grade project. There you go.
A third-grade project. Okay. Project number eight. We're calling them the vestibules at the entrances of, of Main Street School. Currently...
We're going to name these vestibules after you, right? This is Maria's favorite project.
I'm sorry, I believe I just said Main Street. I meant the middle school. It's a California campus and you enter in on either end and it's one set of doors. It is extremely cold in there during the winter months and I believe at one point during this winter, it was measured seven degrees at one point. Our poor security, our greeter in the front cannot, there's no outlets or anything for him. He has absolutely no heat and the man is layered up with multiple layers sitting out there. But it's a quality-of-life issue as well. Because of our current conditions of the dust bowl, a lot of that dirt gets brought into the middle school and gets into the air handlers and into the system and it's causing a lot of, is this me or is this buzzing?
I think you don't need to be as close.
Okay. I feel like you can't hear me though. Okay.
Gary, why don't you hand Maria that mic?
I'll just step away and see if that works. It's giving me a headache. So, as I was saying, the, the dirt and debris and everything gets tracked into the school from the students transferring between the two, different buildings in between classes. It gets into the system and our custodial staff is cleaning those systems with a lot more frequency than they need to. And it's putting a lot of pressure on these systems and they're going to go sooner rather than later. This is why we think that part of this project is also preemptive because we're kind of abusing our system a little bit. In addition, because of all the traffic and everything coming in and all the extra dirt, there's more manpower involved in maintaining the school, which really should be allocated in other areas, but, you know, the custodial staff is extremely spread thin right now. So, what we're, yes? So what we're, yes?
You know, on this, and I get the need, I know this is something we've been talking about for the last couple of years, I think Jim McCann, this was one of his big things, too, we were looking at the whole dust bowl issue. But, and I get the need for it, you know, you have the doors, you go into one, it closes, then you open the second. But just sort of visceral, this is the first number that I've seen so far that sort of strikes me as being high.
Actually, the original?
And that's why I'd like to ask you, I'm sure you guys looked into what 100 grand, why two vestibules would cost 100 grand. Could you give a little background as to what?
Originally, this price was 190,000, because.
It's not quite what I. Not quite the way I wanted it to go, but.
No, originally, hey, we brought it down. Originally, because of, so the main entryway that you come off the street, because under the overhang, there's very little space there to be fire code. You can't build out, which we are on the other end of the lobby, you can't build out the second double doors on the outside of the building. It needs to be built on the inside, because there's not enough clearance on the outside. This is the problem. So originally, it was a whole vestibule in the whole area. So if you're familiar with the area, the security guy sits in the middle, and it's the two doors, set of doors on either side. Originally, because that ceiling goes up high, that whole area was going to be one big set of double doors. Now, instead, we're going to keep the security guard where he is, and using the same look that exists with the blue metal and the glass, we're going to build a second set of doors on either side of him. So also, it wouldn't encroach on the traffic area, because if we built a big vestibule there, then the security guy would be right in the middle of traffic where the kids come down from the stairs, and it just would bottleneck the entire area.
You're comfortable, though, from the diligence that the committee did, that this is sort of the minimum needed to address.
Trust me, this is something else that we challenged Pete on a lot, trying to scale down this, and I think we did a very nice job concerning it was 190,000 at first. So we scaled it down, it's still aesthetically, it's still going to look nice. It's not like we want anything to look, you know, we're spending a significant amount of money. We want it to look nice as well, and inviting, it's a middle school. And, you know, there's an energy savings there as well. Unfortunately, it would be very hard to determine what that is right now. Because, you know, this cold air gets, you know, gets into the hallways, into the classrooms, and it's very difficult to manage.
Yeah.
So by doing this, we would really help that out a lot.
Thank you.
I haven't been into this space in a while, but the, so I can't really picture what you're describing. The vestibule on the west side, that's the riverside, it's built out to the, the existing pillars are inside or outside?
It's outside, but there's enough distance between the.
So you're building out in that direction.
Correct. Correct. We can't build out on the other side, right. But on the other, but going towards, you know, the science wing and those areas, there's a big enough distance there to fire code, we can.
When you look at it, you kind of scratch your head and say, why did they design it this way? Because it seems to be.
Here it is.
An inherent problem with the way it's designed, that if the door is open, especially if they're open on both sides, the cold air is just going to rush right through.
I've got it.
Do you have any other? You didn't want to.
Always listen to Maria.
Can I move on from project number eight?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great.
I can pass this around.
Okay, replacement of the roofs at the Main Street School gym. Currently, it's leaking. And it's a type of roof that is very difficult, you have to start taking the roof off to find the leak. And it's not one of these types of roofs that you could just layer upon. In order to replace the whole roof, you have to take it down, all the way down, and rebuild it. This is one of our preemptive jobs, because currently, there is a leak. They don't know where the source of the leak is. And we've invested some money into that gym. It's new floors, there are new windows, there are new bleachers. And the lifespan of this roof is nearing its end, and it needs to be replaced.
And new lighting, right, with the proposal.
Right, and new lighting, there you go, right. You're scrunching your head like you have a question.
Oh, am I now?
Oh, okay.
Natural, it's old age.
Okay, the dust bowl. Notice the capitals, because this is, we've named this area now, it's official. Okay, this is the space between the campus gym and the middle school. It's dirt, beyond it being an eyesore. Over the past year, I think, or was it last, two years ago, we put padding around the pillars, because this is the area that the kids play. And for safety reasons, we put padding around the pillars, so it was safer. Currently, it's just dirt. We want to create an area using asphalt, just an area for them to play in, and also redirect the traffic, because we need to create a buffer between the kids and the middle school because of the classrooms there, the windows push out. And we want to create a buffer to keep them on the other side and to be safe. We need to provide an area for them to play, and right now, the way it is, it's not an area to play. We're not asking for, you know, the original set of plans where, you know, these beautiful walkways and planters and this, you know, beautiful entrance, we're not asking for that. We're asking for what we need to make it a safe place for the kids to play. We looked at various surface areas, and we came back to which was the cheapest, to the asphalt, because of the practicality. The other ones, although they were safe, they were, one of them that we really liked was a product called Pourin Place. But this is really used for playgrounds, for safety purposes. We ruled this out because of the use of salt, you can't plow it, it really is, to maintain this, we just thought it wasn't a good bang for our buck. So we opted with the more practical version of plain old asphalt.
Remember what the cost difference was? Was it over $200,000?
It was, no, 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 you're talking about the original, he's talking about the Pourin Place.
Oh, right, there it is, right there. It was 220, I think it was 220.
No, 375 was, 375 versus the 141. See, we're saving money. We worked really hard.
What's that buffer going to be? Is that going to be just?
So basically, it's going to be an asphalt area for the kids.
Right.
So if you can envision the area, it's not exactly a square, but what we would do is currently, there is a walkway that dissects it going diagonal. Instead, we're just going to move that and have the traffic loop around it. So the, everyone can walk this way around, and that's the designated walkway area. And then they could, you know, there's some grass and stuff already there, but then build that up, whether we put, you know, move some of the bleachers there, just to create a buffer away from the building.
So the, or we could put benches or something?
Well, we have benches, there are currently benches out there. We're just going to move some stuff around, possibly buy a planter or two, you know.
The idea would be that the center, the main, the bulk of the area, except by the edges, would be.
Asphalt, correct.
Open asphalt for kids to play games or.
And we could easily maintain it, it could be plowed. Correct.
Yeah, and there wouldn't be any kind of, anything like a basketball hoop or a.
There is a basketball hoop on the other side. The basketball hoop is on the other side.
This would just be.
Right, this is the front end, which is where.
And people would walk across it just instead of using.
Right.
It's just much more practical.
You know, currently, currently, if you watch the traffic during the day when the kids are going from class to class, that's exactly what they do. They don't walk underneath the overhang, the tram that connects the two buildings. The kids, even with the snow, you saw their little footprints tracking through it all and all that mud, they go right, because it's direct. So if the asphalt is there, it's also less, you know, dirt and everything else coming into the buildings. You know, this is, that's the way the kids come in.
Did we specify colored asphalt or, I can't remember?
Yes. We could color it.
Color it.
Just one color, we could have like multiple colors.
Well, maybe we'll stencil our logo there.
Could, yeah, I mean, could we, like, let the kids, like they did on the wall of Main Street School, maybe let the kids paint. Could you paint like a mural on it? Or that's too much?
You have options in terms of painting it, the more complex you get, you drive the cost, but. Shared with the committee some examples of what other schools have done, such creatively painted or colorized their asphalt, create some place spaces.
What, have you guys looked into the water issues, if any, since asphalt is not.
There's drainage, there's drainage work involved in this.
Oh, there will be drainage in there. And then what about, any concerns about the heat issues in June, when you have a paved area in between the buildings?
Currently, we have that in all of the schools. I don't see a difference. We have it at Main Street, we have it at Dow's Lane, I mean, the kids play in it now.
It's also a reason to colorize the asphalt. It's also one of the driving reasons to color the asphalt, because you can color it with a lighter shade, if you don't have black, you can, you can put in a lighter, lighter number in the.
Is it possible for us to get a copy of the plans that you guys have on this? Can I, I'd like to see these. I mean, it sounds like you've looked at renderings and.
Well, we use the original rendering, and so is not to have so many additional costs. They drew out something, but it wasn't formalized. That would come whether or not you approve it or not. We kind of thought it was a little foolish to spend that kind of money right now to do drawings, to do formal drawings.
But can we see what we have? Yeah, I just want to see what you guys look at.
So she was right this time.
I already scanned it and sent it to Phil, but he knocked it out.
Well, because it wasn't exact, it was showing trees and stuff, which we're not going to have.
I scanned that one and the vestibule one, and he nixed it.
Oh, right, oh, right.
Just saying. Okay. Any other questions?
Maybe helpful to share what the photos we gave you of the other schools to say here's another part of your thought process.
Right, right, right.
We rejected other options that were, we rejected options that were a lot more expensive. And on some level, we were absolutely being mindful of cost here and thinking about the functionality from a kid's perspective. I think the original designs, the designs that Tanya referenced, you know, those were kind of designed with adults in mind, to be honest. They look very nice, but kids just want a place to play, I think. And right now, they're playing in dirt and dust, and it really is unacceptable.
And it's uneven, there are rocks, and then the dirt is lower than the asphalt around it, so, you know, kids can trip on it, you know, it's not an ideal situation, and it's a safety issue as well, you know.
Except if straight away, it'd be curved.
Is there anything else on the, I just want, because I know the next one starts tier two, and maybe, I don't know if the question is better for later on, but maybe I'll ask it now, as our community members are filing out, we're losing 25% of them already.
And two of them here are ex officiers.
We can take this show on the road.
That's right. Is it, is it a fair statement to say that the entire Buildings and Grounds Committee agreed to the tier one projects versus tier two projects?
Yes.
And that what you're recommending to the board to consider, at least for the bond, is the tier one projects?
That's part of our presentation, you're jumping ahead.
Okay, I'm jumping ahead.
So we can, we'll have time to discuss that.
Yes, two minutes each. Just kidding. Okay, converting the upper, upper lot into a parking lot. Currently, there is a parking issue at the high school that we are all aware of. This particular project, we decided to put into tier two and not recommend for a variety of reasons, but the biggest one is, is if we go ahead and fix East Field, that area is going to have to change, and they're going to have to modify in some way to get the trucks up there. So we kind of felt, rather than spinning our wheels and trying to come up with different, even though Land did draw up two sets of drawings, we thought it'd be best to table this until we see what happens with East Field, what changes happens to that area, and then revisit it then. But going forward, I think the school needs to be a little bit more cognizant and not give out as many parking permits, so we could avoid what happened this year, and maybe stagger them perhaps, to help with the parking issues going forward for next year.
Could you just really quickly just tell me what the parking issues are? I mean, I parked up there today.
The students, approximately 60-plus students park up there and a bunch of staff. Staff members were put up there this year because a lot of these, it's the Bosey's teachers that used to park along the fire lane on the side of the school, the west end of the school. It's a fire lane, and this year, the police really came around the first day of school and ticketed them. So we had to find them, because they're not really technically allowed to park there. So now they're in the upper lot as well. So between that and more students getting parking permits this year, it created a problem. There's really not parking for guests. It's unfortunate. We really thought we could find a temporary, Phil and I were up there, we really thought we could find a temporary solution. But Bev, the pragmatic one, reeled us in and said, it's not safe, you cannot do this. So unfortunately, we couldn't find a temporary solution to help with this year, but we just thought it did not make sense to do anything to that area until we see what happens with East Field and what they do to that area.
Because it's going to, it will be a staging area for the equipment, you know, there's going to be a lot of heavy equipment that we use on both fields, assuming we use something on those ours, but even just on East Field, I mean, it's going to be a lot of equipment. And the trucks will materially change even how they get into that area, because there's a narrow sort of.
Windy ramp, and a truck can't clear that, they're going to have to do something else to get up there.
Yeah, they'll have some little access.
They're going to have to do something, so.
And access it on the Heritage Hill Road or whatever that.
Because it's not ours.
When you get up past the pillars there, that's not our road.
Oh, way around there, you mean?
Right. So we decided to wait and see. Okay. There is a boys' bathroom and girls' bathroom in the high school. Besides aesthetically, they are pretty dilapidated-looking. There's also a nice odor in there because of, there are some plumbing issues, the plumbing needs to be replaced in there. This is not just for aesthetic purposes. It's a quality of life, and it's preemptive. They're doing some repairs in there, but that entire, those two bathrooms really have to go, the boys' bathroom is worse than the girls' bathroom, I would have to say, right? Because of the plumbing issues in there. This is a project that the committee has spoken about possibly putting into the operating budget, one bathroom for next year and one bathroom for '15, '16. Knowing that both of these, this, both bathrooms need SED approval, and it could only happen over the summer. So it would happen, if it's approved, it happens next summer, the monies for one bathroom will come out of next year's operating budget, and then the other one will come out of the following year's operating budget, and it would happen over that summer.
The SED has to approve bathrooms?
SED has to approve almost all of these projects, unfortunately.
It's an infrastructure change.
Yes.
Infrastructure, you know, bathroom is infrastructure.
Yeah, although we're just kind of fixing it, right?
Like, it's fully demo, you know, when you demo a bathroom, you know, you take it down to the studs, the wall.
Yeah, we have to open it up.
All right.
So explain, I'm curious the budget.
It's so rare that I get to mention the word stud in a board meeting, it's just a.
Right after talking about bathrooms. Okay.
That's Robin.
So just clarify this for me, so the money would come out of the '14, '15 budget, but the work would be done in the following summer?
It would happen, right, the summer of '15.
So is that money, is that currently in our budget?
Well, we asked Bev to increase, right, didn't we talk about you increasing?
But what we have presented to date, it has not been included.
But it, so if you were to do that, then it would be half of this, we would increase that line by half of this for this coming year?
Right.
Given that the work wouldn't be done till the following school year?
No, it would happen that summer.
Yes, but this summer?
Next summer, you need SED approval.
So you have to start July 1, that's the following year's budget. Does it make sense to put it in this year's budget if the work is done in July of?
Well, we just thought it was an easier hit.
Okay.
You know, if you take half one now and the other half later.
Oh, because they'd both be done in that summer?
Right, both of them would be done that summer, correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant you'd do one.
No, 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 both of them would be done that summer. That's part of the challenge with a lot of these projects, is that they need SED approval, and you're limited as to when you can actually do the work.
Right, right, no, I just thought you'd stagger them year after year, but you're saying you're dealing with.
No, we would do them both, because technically.
For people here, it would make more sense, it'd probably be more cost-efficient, but you just.
Oh, absolutely, more cost-efficient, and you would be starting your new budget July 1 of that summer, so.
So just to be clear, you're not, you're not, you're not suggesting this is something we shouldn't be doing, or we're going to defer? It's just, this is just about how we're going to pay for it?
Correct. We were thinking of everything.
Just one other, can I ask a question about paying for things? Aren't there really, Bev, am I right, there really are three different ways you can go? You can, you can put something in a bond, and then it gets funded that way. You can put something in your, directly in your, as a line in your operating budget, and then you just spend the money during the year.
Correct.
Can we also put in the budget a transfer? Can we also put in the budget a transfer to a capital fund? Is that possible?
It would have to be a line item, and it would...but then it has to be spent that whole year. And your other alternative is if the voters approved a capital reserve fund, and then you could fund that over a number of years, and then the voters would vote for the use that would...that money would be used for, almost like a savings account for capital.
But that would have to be approved by the voters for a specific defined purpose or set of purposes.
Correct.
And we don't have that now.
Correct.
I thought we had some sort of fund that we...maybe it was just general fund stuff we had where we were making some expenditures.
Years ago?
No, no, recently, fields-related expenditures. It was out of some fund.
Um...
Am I confused about that? What...
No, I...I'm...
Because I thought some of our...the various work that's having to been done, that we've had to do for East Field...
Yeah.
Having to do with...
That was...oh, I know what you're talking about. That was money that had been in a project, it was a line item, and we were going to do some projects with it, but we held off doing those projects because it...it was timing. At the time, we were going to start those projects, we found out about East Field, and we put a hold on everything until we found out what was going to happen.
So there was basically a budget transfer at that point?
Yeah.
Okay. Installation of speed bumps at the campus. This is something that we decided to also table. It makes no sense to install speed bumps now when we're anticipating renovation to the East Field and all those trucks coming up and down. It makes no sense to spend the money now, and we could revisit it after the project.
Also very small amount.
Yeah, it's, you know, which easily could be absorbed out of the annual budget. Okay, project number 15. Covering the radiators at Main Street School. Currently, they're all exposed. It's never been a safety problem. We're just doing it preemptively for safety reasons, that they all should have covers on them. And this is something, unfortunately, the big-ticket item, they're custom-made, unfortunately. So this is also something we thought, because they are custom-made, over the years, next several years, you could, because this is something I believe we already have the SED approval for?
Yes.
Because this is a project that dated back to the Jim Reese days, so this is something we felt as a committee that we could pay for, you know, do a couple here, do a couple there, and eventually pay for them and get them all covered up.
Wait, radiator covers. This is like deja vu. And it's funny that you said we have SED approval, because I could swear that we put money aside for this already.
Well, what happened was is originally, the price...Jim Reese's prices were out of whack. I believe this particular project...
$16,000.
Yeah, $16,000 he had set aside for this project.
He approved it, and the board approved spending on it.
The board approved a bunch of projects, but they were grossly...they were nowhere near what they really cost.
But what happened to the money that the board approved?
We've been fixing other things within buildings and grounds. We've been using that money for other things.
Yeah, I feel like a lot of time, when I'm talking about radiator covers, I'm like, I thought we're done already!
Right. No, we fixed other things.
Okay.
But this is taken, you know, this was a project, you know, when you looked at Bev's spreadsheet and he said 16, and then it went to $100,000, we were like...
I remember, now I remember us talking about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is something that we feel could be done over a period of X amount of years and absorbed out of the budget.
Could you just briefly elaborate on what the safety issue is with these?
They get hot.
Yeah, they get hot, and a kid can go up to them and touch them. They're exposed, they're in the stairwells, they're in various classrooms, they're all over the building.
If I shoved Maria into a radiator that's uncovered, you know, because we're playing around like we used to do in grade school, then, you know, someone could get hurt.
Hurt, or hot?
They're hot. It hasn't happened yet, and it...
They're a Tier 2.
Right.
That's why they're a Tier 2. Look at the red, stop!
I mean...all right, so we'll talk about this when we decide to budget for it.
Me too. Okay. Converting the lights at the high school. The high school gyms, both gyms, Gina Mar and the campus gym, to these LED lights, the same ones that we were talking about earlier.
These lights are not old, so this gets to your question, Robert. These lights are from 2003, so the thinking there is that this was not as high a priority as the other schools. I suppose the reason why the cost is not as much on a proportionate basis, because it's two gyms, is because the lights are newer.
Right.
And easier to change, they're exposed.
Right. They could...yeah.
We didn't estimate the energy savings here, but presumably it would be along the lines of the other buildings. You know, the consistency here would be to do this as well. If there's energy savings in the other buildings, then we should contemplate doing this too. The fact of the matter is, we didn't get to this until the very end, and we didn't think there was enough money left in our hypothetical Tier 1, Tier 2 construct. Remember, we were sort of aiming towards that $5 million bond limit. The board may decide to go over that. We might add this in and pay for this now and get the energy savings, but then we would go over $5 million. It's a little arbitrary, the $5 million number, but you have to work with something as a target. It kind of enforces a certain discipline, which is why Maria saves so much money on the vestibule.
These lights would only be on when it's in use.
Because currently, the lights cannot shut...they don't go off until 10, 11 o'clock every night.
Right, right, there's a lot of use.
I guess the other thinking was that we wouldn't save quite as much money here, because these gyms are more in use than the gyms at Main Street School and at Dow's Lane. So if the lights...if the gyms are not in use in those buildings, then you can turn off the lights and save money. Here, if the lights are...if the gyms are on all the time, the lights are on all the time because the gyms are in use, then you actually aren't going to turn them off and get the benefit of saving that money.
Now, I'm confused.
I knew that was a confusing thing, so...
I know what you said, but is the savings because LED lights are more efficient than the old lights?
Yes.
Or is it that they...you don't have to go through this warm-up and warm-down, warm-up?
Right, and you can't...right, you can't...
That's different, right, then?
Right, like, in between periods, if there's no class, you can't shut them off and then come back. You have to allow to come back and turn them on.
Right, I heard that, okay. Is that the main...that's the main energy then?
Well, compounded between the turning them on and off plus LED.
Right.
The molds that are servicing these two gyms now are $4,000 each, whereas an LED could be...
So that should more than halve the amount of energy, right?
Right.
That's why we...you'll see in the package that we gave you, we actually put this on the bubble as something we might think about adding back in. And then we go and calculate the energy savings and figure out really, does this make sense to add it back in?
Passing the baton back to me now? Thank you, Maria. I don't think I would do that if I were you. Wouldn't have stood up here and talked for half an hour. All right, so we're almost done, we're at slide 25, a couple more to go. So as I said, we also have talked about the bathrooms being done as a '14, '15, and a '15, '16 project. I don't think we need to go over this slide anymore, because Maria did such a good job explaining it, unless...
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
Timing, because in this, it's where I'm curious. Like, if we're making a decision about putting something in the budget or not, can you just clarify timing that the board would need to sign off on, like, renovations for the bond versus timing that we're approving the budget? Because if they're all related, I need to know what the timing is on each of them.
Well, for anything that's incorporated into the general fund budget, for example, and I'll use the bathrooms.
Right.
Okay?
Well, no, I kind of don't know.
You would have to decide whether you wanted to increase the budget for the May vote.
By April 24th, we would have to decide.
Right, right.
But what about the...these, to the bond? When are we going to have to officially decide on the facilities piece of the referendum that we're doing?
Probably the end of May, beginning of June, we need a final...yeah, we need a final decision.
Okay, thanks.
All right. I'm a little confused about the budgeting of the bathrooms. The work wouldn't be done until the summer of 2015.
That's right.
Right, which is the...but we could put it in the budget for the budget year that ends in June 15, even though the work would generally not...maybe it would be started by then. I guess it could be started at the very end of June.
Right, you could put it out to bid, for example, in May of 2015, get the contractor awarded by the board, and get in place so that they're ready to start work by July 1.
But there's no restriction in our putting that in the '14, '15 budget, even though the work isn't going to happen?
No, it would be encumbered, and it would just be encumbered, it's carried forward.
Okay, and we could put, if we wanted to, put both of them...
Correct.
In the '14, '15 budget.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Any more questions on timing? She's got water. She's got water. Maybe she needs more water.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so here's the summary by school. We don't have to dwell on this, but just wanted to give the breakdown by school. About $900,000 in Dow's Lane, $500,000 at campus, and $600,000 at Main Street School. And this is just for the Tier 1 projects. This is the slide that really shows the whole picture of everything added up, and then, including our fields, the estimates that Dr. Harrison gave us a few minutes ago, showing the $3,808,000 down at the bottom, that's the subtotal fields. And if we add that to our first tier number, the almost $2,000,000, $1,974,700, we get to a grand total of $4,982,700, which is under the target of $5 million.
Close to you got it. Got a nicer handle of four than a five.
Yes, yeah.
I was saying, it's like the price is right, can you get as close as possible to five without going over?
Thought did come to us.
Can I clarify one thing? Is when I gave the date, it's the end of April, May. That is for the final dollar figures that we need before we can, you know, prep for the bond referendum. So we really need kind of decisions as to which projects you want by April.
April. So it's almost the same exact timing as the budget, which kind of works out fine.
In that timeframe, then, the architects will firm up the dollar amounts, and if there's any changes that were made, for example, if you didn't want, you know, the vestibules, if there was some change in the door structure and it was going to impact the cost, that would be in that timeframe, that those adjustments would be made.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe you're getting to this, but it'd be helpful to have...so these are the costs, in some sense, these are the price tags of these things.
Yep.
But there's aid behind this, right?
The...
And it'd be nice kind of to know what...which means that the net cost is lower, so it'd be helpful to know.
Well, the aid...
I know it's very really complicated, but it'd be helpful to have some sense of the ballpark.
And we didn't...that's a good call, but we didn't take it into account here.
Right, no, you...this is not really part of what you did, I understand that.
Maybe it's something we need to take...
Yeah, I had given that once before, that the difference in...because we have a bond maturing, okay?
Yeah.
And one coming off and one going on, so that the only difference in about a $3 million bond was about flat, about $3.5 million was flat as far as our debt service, okay?
No, his question was different.
What percentage is adable? What percentage do we expect to get back from the state?
It's about 10%.
Okay.
So we're gonna...so, and does that include...it doesn't include the fields, though, does it?
It would include the fields. I don't know if it's exactly 10%. It changes a little bit on fields.
Yeah, I think you've given me a document that had all...and it was...I just...
Right.
So how does that work? So then, when we complete all this work, is that when the aid comes back?
No, it actually comes...
The aid come back?
No, not in the same year, and they changed the formulas so that it...they used to give you a certain percentage on the amount that you spent that year. Now, they calculate it out, depending on the size of the project or the type, whether they're going to fund it over 15 years or 20 years, and then they divide that up, and they don't give you what the interest rate you're paying, they recalculate it on their own formula.
But on that...
Over the life of the...over the life, the depreciable life of the project?
Well, no, they...well, it's their particular...
Right. But I guess, you know, just from a sources and uses standpoint, if we're getting aid back, when that money comes into the district, does the district just use that against debt service on the bond?
No, it's a line item in the budget under state aid.
Doesn't count revenue?
Oh, it just regular revenue.
It's a general...
Right, so, yeah.
We're funding everything out of the bond, so it just comes in...
It'd just be more revenue that year.
Well, we're funding the debt service out of taxes, right, but it's just extra revenue.
Right, so, well, I think that's a...
It's a line item in the budget.
I think that's a point we should keep in front of both ourselves and the public.
Sure.
Is that the costs are not $5 million, they're 45...4.5 million-ish.
Yep.
Right.
And it's really two things. It's the two line items that's to keep in front of the public are the state adable and at least the initial projections on savings.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
That's right. It's okay, I'll go to that slide, and then we can also...we can always go back to the other slide, too.
Is...I believe it is, is it adable if it's in a capital budget? If it's in the operating budget, is it adable as well?
As long as it's a capital project.
If it's in the operating budget, as opposed to funded by a bond as a capital project, is it still adable?
Anything's adable as long as it's a capital project with SED approval.
No matter where it's funded?
Correct.
Okay, great.
And do we need these other projects in order to make the fields adable?
You need some projects. I can't give you the percentage. I talked to SED about that, and they said, "Well, give us a list of your projects, and then we'll tell you approximately how much of the fields would be adable." There's a certain percentage that they have to work off of.
There may be some benefit in our kind of working the exact details of the projects to get a slightly better aid.
Correct.
Although we don't get a big percentage back, so it's probably not a process. Back to me. So this slide 28 was an attempt to show the savings relative to the costs. So bear with me here as I talk you through it. So the bond, just using big round numbers, $5 million, with the interest paid out over 15 years, the total cost of this bond is actually $6,657,000. That's the estimate at a 4% interest, right? The total bond attributable to fields, taking that 6,657 and breaking it out, is $4 million. So the fields that, you know, look like they cost us $3 million actually cost us $4 million because of the interest. So then I broke out the energy and non-energy related projects, so that we have a total cost for our energy-related projects of $1,547,000. cost for our energy related projects of $1,547,000. That's the total cost including the interest, because we're paying for it over time, that's what I was saying earlier. So, on the other side, we have our energy savings, which are every year for 15 years. And arguably, they go beyond that, you know, because obviously to the extent that we keep the fixtures for 20 years or 25 years, the savings keep going. But we use 15 years to be conservative. The savings over 15 years, taking that original $60,000 and then multiplying that by 1.03 and compounding it over 15 years, gets you to $1,111, a million dollars. So, the net cost, simply taking the cost of the facilities that are energy based, that 1,547 minus the 1,111.8, you get to $435,000 is the net cost. So, we don't quite get them to break even. I guess if you took it out another five years, you probably would get pretty close. But again, using 15 years, it costs us $435,000 at the end of 15 years. Is that clear?
It wasn't till the end.
The energy piece was...
Just the energy piece, because the, obviously the fields, you know, there's just...
Sorry, so what's the 435,000?
That's just the, for the energy piece alone.
If you take the cost of the energy less than...
So, you could really, to do, to do the math even further, John, I could have taken the 435 and added it back, added the $1,91,000 for the non-energy and added the 4,018 for the fields to come to a total, right? That's probably what I should have done.
You know this well, because you, I don't understand.
The net cost is just for the energy piece, so that's the 1,547, which is the total cost of the energy related projects.
I got it.
Minus the energy savings, so that's the net cost of 435, right? And if you wanted to sort of look at it somewhat bigger picture, you could have added the $1,91,000 and the 4,018 back into it, and that would have given you a net, net number for the whole thing. And then, using your logic, you also would have subtracted off the $500,000 in the aid to get to a bottom line net.
So, if we keep going, it'll be, they'll pass. You look at it, dear.
And we can't be non-hot anymore.
Right.
Exactly.
But this is, I, this is, I thought about this long, this is right, that this, to say they cost 435 for our energy related projects, because they have a return, they actually save us money.
But the problem with it is, it's right, assuming the estimates are right.
Well, absolutely.
But you never really know how much you're going to save until, you know...
Exactly.
Could save a lot more and could save less, like, we don't know.
Well, I, and I would say that with any numbers, and John, you know, you work with large numbers of numbers all day, that if you have more numbers, then the likelihood of any one assumption being flawed and actually destroying your entire assumption base is mitigated by the fact that you have multiple assumptions in there. So, the fact that we had several assumptions that were as low as 10%,
Right.
That might offset the fact that we had a couple assumptions that were as high as 40 or 50%.
Right.
Right?
Totally.
I can go back and figure this out, but if, if we're wrong on the energy inflation and we don't have any energy inflation, what does that do to the numbers, do you know?
Oh, I'm sure, the compounding over 15 years is significant.
Well...
Well, 60 times 15, does he have a calculator?
Oh, doesn't, I mean, it's, it's...
That would be $900,000.
Wow.
Yeah, so that...
Are you?
I'd like my energy cost not to go for 15 years.
So, the actual compounding isn't much, as much as I thought, right? 60 times 10 is 600, you added, yeah, it's 900.
Do you want discussion at this point?
There's one more slide, sorry. So, next steps, so can, we should consider maybe moving the lighting, the high school lighting conversion in Tier One, that's just something to be discussed. We should talk about the value of having a project manager that would be reporting to Bev, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations. We should think about having that role. Now, to be clear, LAN charges us for that, that's part of their fee, they manage the project. I had thought that we should have this role considered because of the problems that we had in our last major project in 2003. We did not have our own independent project manager overseeing the campus project. We relied on our architects to do that. It's not a judgment of LAN or architects in general, it's just saying that possibly $80,000 to have a, our own PM overseeing it, managing the costs, given the scope of this, $5 million in expenses, it's a relatively small amount of money to invest in managing it. But, you know, it's not in here, it's just something to, to consider. And again, it's somewhat redundant with what LAN actually does for us. Sometimes redundancy is inefficient, sometimes you catch things through your redundant efforts.
Sorry, did you, do, you don't have a sense of how much that would...
We talked about it, I mean, we were saying about 80,000.
I didn't hear a question.
What, what?
It's 80,000, and it's 80,000 annually, I think, right, Chris? Or is it, yeah?
80.
80,000 annually. Maybe, if Chris thought it was a little high, Bev had set up in her district, it was as low as 45, 50, right?
And this would not be a full-time person then?
It'd be a contracted service during the duration of the construction project.
But that person would be working full-time, or no?
I, I don't necessarily think it would be full-time, but there would be a schedule that we would agree to for the building.
I'm just wondering about the qualifications, frankly, of a person who would, you know, would get for that price.
Typically, it's a person that, that's an architect or engineer, you would hire an independent firm of someone that has, you know, those types of holistic experiences. It may be one or two people that are combined through one firm, based upon their particular expertise.
And would, would they be bonded in some way against liability and things, because...
Typically, they, they would be, yes, yeah.
Want to be able to, obviously be able to hold them accountable.
You would issue essentially an RFP to recruit services like this and you would, you know, certainly develop the scope of requirements that they'd have to fulfill.
And then the dates were also...
I mean, you know, I, I think we need to talk about it, I mean, you know, I always take a step back and I think, okay, it's a lot of money, probably just a lot of money, and ultimately, yes, I want to do them right, but I think we maybe need to look at our existing staff and see if perhaps there's someone could go a .5 down here or a .2 down here. I just, you know, there's still so much that I think we need in the curriculum and in the schools and in the classrooms, and we're sitting here contemplating so much money that is not the classrooms, that it, that personally, I, and it's just my initial gut reaction is, when you're talking about now adding another position that has absolutely nothing to do with the learning of the kids in the classroom, in addition to the fields and all that, and all of which is great and has to get done, I tend to say, you know, personally, I would want to look very hard at what we have on staff and perhaps other ways to reconfigure before I, I jump on the band-ragging of adding. And again, I understand it, it makes perfect sense and it's probably the right way to go if, in a perfect world, but we really have limited funds and it's 80,000 here and, you know, 100 here, and it just makes me nervous at this point in time. It's just my initial reaction is, I think it's a little kind of too much at this point for me.
And then, I think that's, in, in the slide, I think it's very deliberate that the word "consider" is there, and we are sitting and, and thinking about the, the concerns, the real problems that happened in the last construction project and understanding the scope of building schools and doing, you know, let's say, the hypothetical $5 million worth of projects is, is quite different. But we, we acknowledge that we want to make certain that we don't relive any of those experiences before, and that number could be less than 80,000, it's a conservative figure.
I, I don't disagree, but you know, honestly, we're, we're spending 20,000 or 25,000 on a communications consultant. So, there are judgment, to me, there are judgment choices we have to make, and I just, I am nervous that we're saying yes to a lot of things, and I think maybe, before we say yes to so many things, we really need to look at the whole landscape of what we're doing and figure out the whole priority. I'm worried that, and you've heard me say this before, I think over the course of the year, we say, yes, that makes, it all makes sense. I mean, yes, that makes sense, yes, that makes sense, and you end up in June and you have to look back at the year of all the things that you added up, the 10 grand here and the 15 here and the 10 here, you know, the 22 here, and then, you know, you make a judgment call. Do we want to do all these little things or do we want to do an $80,000?
Your, your point is, yeah, and Frank, yeah, well, I, I hear you, I think, well, hold on.
I just want to sit down.
Yeah, no, when we let them end up, I mean, I think you'll find that, you know, we, we get it, you don't want to do the, you want to consider that.
I'm not going to make a comment.
Okay, we get it.
Everything.
Okay. You know, can I, can I, before we start in the car, because I do want to make a few points, because, you know, I think that we're already starting to look at this a bit in a vacuum, and I think, you know, for the three community members here and hopefully if anybody watches this on TV, you know, you have to realize that none of this could be taken in the vacuum of one bond issuance looking ahead the next 15 years or the effect of our budget this year and next year. You know, during the market downturn and as the tax cap came in, our district, like a lot of districts around us who are facing similar situations and passing much larger bonds than this board is contemplating, basically let their facilities lapse. We did, we have for years. And looking at our past budgets, and I speak as a senior citizen on the board in, in addition to Robin, if you look at how we've budgeted over the last few years to get to the budget numbers, to either stay within the tax cap or maintain our educational programs and our teachers, we, the first things to get cut generally have been facilities needs. We see that in the buildings, and I want to thank the Buildings and Grounds Committee for all the great work you folks did. I mean, it was amazing to have to go through this with the entire committee and put this together. But at the end of the day, we have fields needs, it's been going on for years. We have facilities needs, it's been going on for years. I think the board needs to take, you know, going back to board governance training. Not only do we have a fiduciary duty to the children in the classroom to provide the best education we can, we also have a fiduciary duty to maintain the district's buildings and grounds. And so, I, I agree, we have to look at things holistically and see what we're spending money on, but we cannot continue to pass the buck down the road on our facilities and merely focus on our education. We need to focus on both, and I want to thank, again, the Buildings and Grounds Committee for, for putting this together, because I think by starting to prioritize things based upon the facts and based upon the research and the need, I think we're, you know, we're getting close. I mean, the, the last thing I want to add, and I mentioned it, is that, you know, this is not unique to Irvington. If you look around, especially in West Chester, over the past couple of years and even currently, there's many districts doing the same thing we're doing. So, I don't want anybody to think that Irvington is unique in how we've treated our fields or is how we've treated our grounds, because that's clearly not the case. I think it's been a, a product of, of how school districts in general, over the past five, six, seven years, have had to budget. So, with that, I guess the only questions I had, I guess to start off, because maybe at, at least from a board approval standpoint, and obviously we're just seeing all of this today, and people might have individual ideas, but, you know, to try to move things a bit forward. I understand, and I think you mentioned, that the Buildings and Grounds Committee unanimously is recommending to the board that the Tier One projects be included in the budget and then...
In the bond.
In the bond. And then the Tier Two, we look at other creative ways, either with spreading out over future budgets, we address those things. As board members, do the two of you support the Tier One projects going into the bond?
I also would like to say that Phil is the beautiful author of this nice presentation. He worked very, very hard on it. We made our comments, but he was the nice one to put this together, so I want to give him kudos for that.
Thank you.
It was a great presentation, and you guys, it, it's obvious, you spend a ton of time on it, you, again, you made our life, the rest of us had it easy for this, so thank you for that. It was great and it's so thorough.
Yeah, you know, I, I personally take a huge amount of comfort like I do with any of the committees, that, you know, two board members were involved and vetted all of these issues. So, you know, at this time, and I'm happy to, you know, we should all have our, our questions answered, and I'm sure as the cost estimates come in, we'll have more questions to ask and finally get circles around numbers, but I'm also willing to, you know, move forward, at least on, you know, on a discussion basis by taking the direction of the Buildings and Grounds Committee and, and, you know, moving forward with the Tier One recommendations. Thank you.
We won't take anything personally.
No, it, look, I mean, I think, I actually think you did a great job, right? I, I think these are, it's a great recommendation, I, I think there's a...
Is that in the minutes?
What?
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What did you say?
When you said that they did a great job, I wanted to make sure that was in the minutes.
Oh, can you put it down? No, it's great, but I do think, look, and I think my, I need some time, first of all, to pass us all this, but I, I'll tell you, if you want to hear kind of what I'm thinking right now, minor, but I think it's just, it's going to be a little subjective. I mean, other, everyone's going to have, it's not, like you said, it's not personal and I, I think it's a great recommendation, I just think there's some other ways to look at it, and, but one thing I want to say also is, a lot of these things, I think, such as the, the, what is it called, the events, the...
Univents.
Yeah, like, no, the univents or whatever, I mean, things that impact the learning environment, like, it is so hard for these kids in Dow's Lane when it's like 150 degrees and the teachers are like, does anyone have fans they could donate?
Right, no, it's amazing, that's true.
It's like, it's impossible, so things like that, to me, are a no-brainer. Like, our, our kids really need, you know, the right kind of learning environment, so I, immediately I look at those and I'm like, okay, in my mind, that, I don't even want to, like, in my discussion, that's a no-brainer, that's a definite, has to happen. The, I, I guess, the, where I'm getting, where I need to think about is, one is very minor, actually, and again, it's just looking at the cost. The converting the Dow's Lane gym lighting, it's not that old, 99, the savings are relatively small, 100 grand, and I'm thinking about 100 grand of, you know, what else is in here? And then, and this is all obviously tonight, so a stream of consciousness, and then I'm looking at the bathrooms and adding that to the budget, 80 grand, and where's that going to come from? I, I mean, it might work out, but so, that's the one I'm kind of thinking maybe I could play with personally, just for those...
For all of, all of the gyms or just the Dow's Lane?
No, just the Dow's Lane one, because of the numbers.
And you, and you recognize, the reason why it's so expensive is because there needs to be demolition there. That's, that's the...
Yeah, no, I mean, Gary explained that, but just, again, it's a pure, it's not that old and looking at the numbers and, and seeing what else is here and, and then seeing maybe that's the one that I think we could play with a little bit, again, my opinion, and then that might give us a little more flexibility on the bathrooms to, if we can't figure out a way to work them in the budget or we want to keep the budget down. So, that's the main thing. Some of the Tier Two things, I guess I also look at this and kind of think to myself, is this, it's all nice to have, but some of it, as we've done for years, could we live with things that, like, for example, the speed bumps? Yes, it would be nice to have, and yes, I know it might be a safety thing, but like, for example, today, when I was at the high school, the teachers were, a couple of the teachers were talking about how a lot of the speeding up there are the kids, and I'm thinking, wow, maybe there's another way to approach that. Like, if you get caught speeding, you're not allowed to bring a car to the campus. I don't know, I mean, I'm just, so, I'm just kind of thinking, some of these I think are, would like to have, but not necessary.
It's funny, because we were at cab this week and it was the opposite. The kids were complaining about...
Really?
The parents and how hard it is for them to get out, it takes them a half hour because of the speeding and the way they park and everything else.
We should ask Howie Stern to come in and give his report about the speeding.
That's funny, that's really funny.
I think, I think speeding is an issue, I think speeding is an issue. I personally have, I walk around there a lot, because I walk the dogs. I see the residents who live up there, they speed, they don't even stop at the stop sign that's up there. I, I mean, everyone's speeding. I see faculty flying in, parking and going into the schools. It's, I don't think it's exclusive to one...
Yeah, I use that as an example, but there's a few that I kind of think, you know, even the parking lot, I mean, I don't, you know, I would love to have that as a grab a lot. Lights up there, I'm not so sure about, maybe, you know, again, that becomes an issue of can't, will, will that become something that might not get approved because if there's a lights issue and people might not want that if their houses are next to there? I don't know, so it's kind of...
That was all something we had discussed.
Where am I thinking?
That's why it's not, we're not considering it, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's ultimately where I'm coming from. For the most part, I think it's a great job and I do agree with most of it, I think there's a little wiggle room there and I'm worried about the budget numbers and how this all ties in, and I, I think your thought, I, I guess I completely agree that, you know, give or take, I think 5 million seems to be a, a good amount to shoot for, and I agree with what you said too, Bob, that we put a lot of this off a lot, and it's not going to, better to pay for things now and be in control, such as moving the district offices, than try to wait another year or two and then have to spend twice as much money, because it's an emergency situation.
And I'm, I'm very concerned about doing serial bonds. You know, I think that, you know, we've put the work in, that, you know, at some point it's a gut check as to what's necessary and what we should do, and, because I'd hate to have a situation where, you know, much like our, our discussion about going over the tax cap, you know, you, you, you can only go back to the well of the community so much, and I, I think hopefully what we're doing here is presenting a, you know, a comprehensive plan and to not only show what we feel we need to do now, but, but what needs we're, we're still putting off, because we're trying to be as conservative as possible with, you know, with, with, with the money we're asking the community for.
I mean, and then the last thing, which I just, I don't, I just don't know if there's a better solution, but I'm, the dust bowl, it's still, I wish there was a better, cheaper solution that we can come up with.
I believe that was the cheapest.
I mean, it sounds like you guys have been pretty thorough though, so, I mean, my initial reaction is, oh, can't we do better? But the answer probably is no, but that's kind of initially my reaction, so.
Yeah, 141 seems like a lot to pay.
Yeah.
For asphalt, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Would you like to elaborate at all, or is that just the cost, is that just the Would you like to elaborate at all, or is that just the cost, is that just the cost of asphalt?
It's a big area.
Yeah, it's a big area.
Yeah.
Ah, the drainage, too.
Drainage is the biggest, not just the asphalt.
Right.
I think, John, you also, I'm sorry, were you?
I'm good.
John, please?
A couple of questions, and then I can give you some reactions. If I didn't say before, I told Phil this by email, I think this was a very nice presentation, and it spoken, it was also very nice from both of you. You were in doubt, but you did, you great. I think at the beginning, Phil, you said that there had been some sort of a five-year plan or something?
Five-year facility plan has to be updated every year.
Okay. And is that meant to sort of be everything that we need to do in the next five years to meet some standard of the things being in good condition, or? The reason I'm asking is, can we be comfortable that if we do this, except for unforeseen things, that we're going to really have an up-to-date physical plant in good condition for the next five years or X number of years? And it would really be great to be able to say that. And I don't know what that number of years is, but I think it's kind of important for us to be able to ask, have we gotten to the point where we really need to be to have the physical plant be what it should be, in good condition?
Good question.
So, yeah, it's not a, it's not a question that obviously needs an immediate answer.
No, it's a good question.
Looking back, I would find it helpful, just from a standpoint of my own decision-making, because a lot of this comes down to what we think the community wants. The community will have its opportunity to express that opinion when we do the referendum in what the end of September, but we're trying to gauge what we think they'll go for because it's, you know, we don't want to have to keep going back multiple times before we get it right. Do we have a, is it possible to get kind of the history of what other bonds we, when have we done this, this sort of past capital spending? Have there been other sort of, these sorts of capital spending, either bonds or, or other sort of, or maybe they were just budgeted? I just kind of want to have some sense of what our capital spending has looked like. I don't, I gather we probably haven't done a capital bond-
In a lot of years.
Since the, when the middle school campus was built, right?
Well, after, they did the master plan, and then they did another one about some, kind of some follow-up stuff for another couple million or two the following year. So, but they were, technically, they're all kind of worked together.
Is that, I know there was, the Main Street School got a new roof at some point in there, and-
It was supposed to.
Oh, the Main Street School roof?
Yeah. It was, it was actually, the second one was supposed to include work on the upper Dow's Lane, but that money didn't actually get spent on that. And then we had to do that whole, there was a whole evaluation done about five years ago to see what money was, were actually spent, what the money was originally earmarked for and where was it spent, because there was a concern in the community that it was just gone. And so it was, basically, we had auditors come in and account for where all the money went. So the money all went somewhere. It just unfortunately didn't go to what it was earmarked for. So there was another bond after the original one.
But the original bond was something like 2,000 or whatever, right? 2,001, but nobody around here, nobody, nobody was around that.
I wasn't here.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know.
Yeah.
Was that for the, the 55 addition, say roughly like 2,004?
55 addition?
Yeah.
The windows of the Main Street Gym. I think that was money that we raised from the bond, that they finally spent on that. I would have, I would have to go back and look. I haven't looked at it in years. But yeah, other than those two-
Yeah. And I'd kind of like to, what, the bonds that, that we proposed and didn't get passed, they were entirely for athletic things?
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know, John, if it, I mean, listen, you need what you need for your own.
I mean, I can answer that briefly. Yes.
I'm just trying to gauge what, because the community didn't support that, and we think the community, we want to be comfortable if the community will-
Well, but the community is far different now, right, than it was back then?
I don't know. Well, for sure, but it's different, but-
The first one included field, you know, artificial turf on the field. It actually included tennis courts, and it actually included paving the parking lot.
The upper parking lot.
The upper parking lot.
I think it also included lights, and included a lot of things that were-
Uh, did I remember?
Included lights.
Did it include lights?
There was a lot of things that were in there that-
But that was, but for the most part, for the most part, it was athletic facilities, including tennis courts and a parking lot.
And do you remember what, roughly how big of a bond that was?
It was like 9 million, wasn't it?
It was a lot more than this one?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's what I-
Yeah, and then the second one was-
It was an order of magnitude bigger.
Right.
The second one was like A, B, like it was two severe.
Oh, yeah, right.
Well, if A passed, then you could vote for B, but A went down in flames. And the second one pared that down. It took out the tennis court, took out the lights, took out the parking lot. It really just tried to say, what is the bare bones of what we think we need. But it was only athletic facilities.
And that was something like during the height of the financial crisis.
That was right when the economy was beginning to spiral. Yeah.
Right, and it didn't, it didn't do well enough.
Yeah. I mean, we could easily pull the amount of bond in the referendum stuff.
It's just, this is kind of what I need. I have a sense.
It's, it's easy, right? It's easy to just pull the referendums. Um, Elaine can pull it for you. The referendum that people voted on, and outside the bond law.
I'd like to see it. I think it'd be helpful. It'd be informative. Okay.
And the first one, by the way, went down by 50 votes.
Yeah, I know, it was, I know, it was really close, and it was a-
And it was a big-
It was a bitter fight.
It had a lot of bells and whistles.
I'd argue it's ancient history compared to what this board is looking at for 2014.
It is. Oh, no, it totally is.
It's ancient history, but it's not, yes, there's a lot of new residents, but there's a lot of old residents in the town, too.
There are. There are.
You know, and, and some of the same considerations will be, will be at issue. This, we're not talking about, anyway, we don't have to talk about that anymore.
I mean, I will make one more comment on the first one. The other thing about the synthetic turf back, way back when, as we all remember, there wasn't as, there wasn't as much research, and there wasn't all these other options like organic and hybrid. So it was only the chrome rubber, it was the tire fill, and there was a lot of negative reaction to that. So I also think not only was it, you know, a long time ago, but I think thanks to modern technology, things have evolved. There's a lot of better options now.
No, I just think that we obviously need to learn from whatever history we can on this. Obviously, we need to do something for, I mean, I still want to talk some about what we need to do with those fields, but we obviously need to do something about, about both of them. Let me, but, and talk about your guys' work. I think the, the one thing I want to, the one broad statement is, I think, what you're doing, but I maybe look at these projects a little, some of them a little differently, which is that if a project is just about energy savings, which very few of these are, because even a lighting project is about, in most cases, the quality of the lighting, for the gym projects, basically. We want to kind of think about what's the payback in terms of energy savings, like, we're going to weigh that payback against the cost, obviously, which you're doing, okay? But, so the one where I have a sort of, the one that really sticks, which I wonder about, is project number one.
The wiring.
The wiring, which is, I think, solely motivated by energy savings. No other real benefit for that that we know of. And even Gary said that he thought part of the reason that these lights were on was some safety requirements. Yeah, so that might give one pause a little bit on that anyway. And, and if the, if the estimated annual cost savings is $6,000 and change, and the cost is over $200,000, that's a lot of years to get that money back, I think. So that makes me, you know, given that there's no other benefit, it does nothing to the quality of the kids' experience, to anybody's experience.
Except the neighbors.
Yeah, but they moved there, you know, after the high school at least was already there. So, you know, they're, they can pay for it if they want. Yeah, I don't think we should be doing it for the neighbors. I don't think that's responsible, in my opinion. If it's a problem for the neighbors, you know, we could maybe work something out with them. The, so I'm, that, that one gives me pause, and I might suggest, unless there's a good counterargument, to remove it from my list. The others, you know, the, you know, some of these others, the Eli, the Main Street School gym, there's not a, there's a pretty long payback period in terms of the energy savings from that, but you also get the benefit of a better quality light. And we haven't really quantified it, but I take your point that we're probably going to need to replace these things fairly soon anyway, so it's money we probably have to spend, you know? So there seems like less discretion on that one. Less clear about Dow's Lane, also really long payback on Dow's Lane, so I wonder about Dow's Lane on that one. We're only gaining a little over $1,000, and it's costing us 100 times that. And also, just as a point of, well, Dow's Lane Gym has wind, well, they both have windows, but Main Street School Gym gets used a lot after hours, is that right?
They both do.
Dow's does, too?
They both do.
I've never been to Dow's Lane ever.
Yeah, they're used a lot.
They're used a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
And also, our sports.
Use Dow's Lane, too?
Oh, yeah.
All the time.
My daughter goes down there for lacrosse.
Basketball, indoor soccer, everything.
Okay, our teams use the-
Yeah.
Okay, all right, fine.
I mean, there's, there's actually a lack of space. They could use more, if they had more gyms, they'd use more gyms. So they're at a premium to get a ton sun.
Like wrestling and fencing going on in the Main Street Gym simultaneously. Because there's not enough.
But no mixed martial arts, where they wrestle and fence together?
No.
Yeah, okay, so Univents sound great, and boiler controls, sounds like, you know, you know, that's the thing, but the boiler controls have a big payback in energy.
Right.
We'll get that money back quickly, if that's, if that's at all correct. And, you know, same with, you know, so I'm not going to belabor these. Any other comments? I think I'm more or less, just on first blush, and I want to look through this more or less and agree with you on what I hear about the Tier One projects other than that. And I agree that we, I agree with your thinking on, just looking through to see if I, I won't, yeah, I think I, I don't think I disagree with, I'd like to hear a little bit more about, when we, when we get to talking about radiator covers, to hear a little bit more about radiator covers.
That conversation's probably a couple of years down the road.
Yeah, yeah, well, maybe we want to have those, right? I mean, if there's something we want to get, have a physical plan?
Go to the summary. Just read it about you.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. And at first blush, yeah, that's my reaction.
We're good? Okay. I think our community has left us, so I would ask anyone watching, if they have questions, you could submit them, please, to Mr. Whitney and to Mrs. Cashkin, or to anyone, you know, Dr. Harrison and Mrs. Miller, anyone on our Buildings and Grounds Committee. I think that's the best. I know that the board may have additional questions, and I suggest that we focus those via email to, to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. I want to thank our professionals for all being here this evening, and I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
Wait, can I just ask a question?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry.
No.
Well, we, I did have some, you know, there were some questions that I raised about, about Fields that I thought we were going to, you know, we don't have to talk about them tonight, obviously, but I did have, you know, partly, mostly having to do with the configuration of East Field and what the, what questions were there. And Marie had one, said it's something we could talk about.
I kind of thought it was a Fields meeting, too. I mean, I thought this was the second of three meetings, and I'm going to vote it's going to be on Thursday.
Yeah.
We just advertised it.
So, well, these people showed up.
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, listen, I'm happy to stay, if you have, if you have questions. I mean, I-
Well, your question is the question that I raised by email, which is that I don't understand, I still don't understand, why we can't, you know, if we're going to put $1.2 million into East Field, why we can't find out what the cost, what the incremental cost would be for making that field big enough to fit a regular size, whatever the largest size playing field we have, which I think is either lacrosse or soccer.
Right.
Or a big soccer field, you know? And I went and walked around it, and I think we're talking the, the far end of it is the kind of softly sloped end, where you could conceivably build out a little bit if you wanted to. And if we're spending that much money, and it wouldn't take a lot more to make it big enough for, to have another real playing field, we might want that for very-
Yeah, I think, I think we should have, have Lan address that, but I, I know that there was a schematic that was shown. But my understanding is, A, it has been looked at, as early as even, even a year and a half ago when we started this-
You want to resist me?
Please, yeah, please.
Wait, but can I just, before you answer this, this, my question for you is, John, we have more practice times than we have games. The usage is more for practices than it is games. So, I mean, I'm, I didn't look up the numbers. I would be curious to see what those numbers are. For the bang for the buck, why would you make it into regulation size fields if you're only talking about, what, varsity has 12 contests a year, and modified is eight?
You don't need the regulation size if you're lacrosse or football or soccer.
Right. Practices, you don't, it doesn't need some regulation. And you can have multiple sports up there, multiple teams, I should say, within a sport, practicing.
I don't think we can talk about bang for buck until we know what the bucks are.
Okay, well, I think, I think we do, and I think there were some, there were some logistical reasons why it was a-
Yeah. I'll try to answer it a little bit. One, we did not do a full analysis of cost to answer your question directly. The reason we didn't do it is, for some of the reasons you just heard, that that is a practice and sub-varsity level field. You can fit a regulation-sized soccer field, a smaller, but regulation-sized field there, so you can play games there. But there's a need for practice space, and you don't want to, at least your committee's discussions and your citizens committee's discussions, didn't see the need to have formal games there, because if you did, you'd probably want to bring in other things, other amenities of bleachers and access, and things that would escalate the cost very quickly. Things that you don't have there today, that you do have at your main field at Mazarros. You have bleachers, you have easier access to parking, you have concessions. Those things would just compound the need to make East Field a usable varsity level, if you will, playing field, where it serves very well for a practice field, and you have a need for both. So you have a need for practice, you have a need for, for the game day field.
What's the, what's the, what's your rationale, John?
Well, look, I'm very frustrated you can't give me a number on this. All that stuff is kind of silly, frankly. But, and I'm just getting, kind of, beginning to get annoyed that people can't, you know, at least try to answer this question. We're going to go to the community and tell them we're spending $1.2 million on a practice field. And, and that's going to last a long time. And who knows, down the road, we might want to get to a point, maybe there's a problem in Mazarros at some point in the future, and we might want to be able to play lacrosse, or soccer, or even football somewhere. We don't have to put bleachers in now, but it's nice to have the option. We're also talking about putting a parking lot close to it. The concessions all are mobile, anyway, so that's not an issue. Bleachers can be, who knows, they can be rolled. They're not, you know, it's not, you know, I just think that, and I don't think that the committee we had even was tasked to consider this option. I think they basically took it as given that that would be a practice field. And it just seems like if you, if you're like-
That's not true.
Well, it's not evident in anything that I read.
John, I, you seem to be taking the issue personally, but, but I mean, this has been something that I, as long as this Fields issue's been discussed.
It has not been discussed.
It has been discussed.
Rich, wasn't one of these scenarios-
Well, I know it's not by you, but the point has already been decided.
To take out all these trees and to expand it and cap it? That was one of the scenarios.
One of the scenarios, and it was driven by the cap issue.
Those trees were elsewhere, I think, weren't they?
Was to remove a section of trees, but in doing so, you didn't gain usable playing space, because it was on, if there's four corners of the field, it was on the diagonal of the field that you had enough width already across the diagonal. It's the opposite diagonal, it's the north to south diagonal of the field, because the rectangles rotated.
Relative to the, well, all right, so the, well, I just feel like it's important to, it's important for me to, you know, it seems like you're very close to having a field the right size for at least having this flexibility in the future. And it, I just don't get the rationale for not having the flexibility. Suppose you want to have two games at one time, you know?
Okay.
And, you know, you could tell, you know, if we, for another $30,000, maybe, whatever it is, I have no idea what the number would be, we could extend the field the extra 20 feet or whatever it might need to be to build it.
Well, the, the field is large enough for your JV soccer to have a game there and have varsity at, at the main field.
Right, but why not have flexibility, the overall flexibility?
It's a possibility, but I think intuitively in my mind, the cost is substantial.
If we have a track meet and we want to have a lacrosse game at the same time.
A what?
Suppose we want to have track and lacrosse happen at the same time. Track would be, and Mazarros, it has to be, because that's where the track is, but we, you know.
John, I hear the hypotheticals, but, you know, frankly, the, the folks who are involved with the athletics on a day-to-day- with the athletics on a day-to-day basis haven't proposed that. It has been discussed. I guess I'm wondering why you think it hasn't, and, you know.
I need to understand the logic, and I don't, I don't understand it, so.
Okay, I understand you don't understand, but I don't know what more to do, because unless you're suggesting to the board for an action item that we reopen it and start costing this stuff out, which I'm not in favor of, then there's really not much we could do to help you right now.
That is what I would like to see.
Okay, I'm not in favor of that, because I believe it's already been done.
I have not seen, I've not seen any evidence of that.
Well, one of the plans was to remove a section of those trees.
And, no, but that was a different section. It wasn't, that wasn't for this purpose. It was, that was because we were thinking of a one, that was when we were talking about putting two feet of clean fill on, and in order to hold it in some way, I didn't fully understand.
Right, but it was still taking out a significant area of trees on the back end of the.
May I introduce, may I introduce? So, to look at this, we can ask Rich and his colleagues to investigate this. Introducing this concept, though, does bring along with it a host of other issues. If you're going to have varsity fields, you, there has to be consideration for additional ADA compliance and accessing the area if it's being seen as a regular game field. If it's seen as a practice field, there aren't those same degree of requirements or considerations. And if you're going to have a varsity level field, we also have to consider arrangements for seating. So there's other factors that would have to work in tiers on top of this.
Yeah.
That would be requirement. So to say, my guess, John, and it's not to be contrary, my guess to say that it's $30,000 or $50,000 more, we're going to be talking several hundred thousand dollars more. So, looking at, you know, I'm, rather than debating it, I just want to ask the board for the direction, understanding that there's going to take time for Rich to design this, to cost it, to look at some specs for ADA, which is going to talk about access not only onto the field, but all the way up from the nearest hill. So if we're, you know, thinking that we may end up having to do a parking lot to be able to provide that necessary access, you'd have to build ADA-compliant ramps and staircases to access it, because it's elevated. So there'll be levels to this, so simply just ask for the direction as to what you want us to do.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Are you asking that if we, not necessarily to designate it as a varsity field, but that if we were to build it that size, call it a practice field, but just make it that size, so it gave us an option in the future, is that what you're asking? Or are you asking if we designated a varsity field?
Right, no, I'm not asking, I'm not suggesting we designate, right. I'm suggesting if we're so close in size, field is really close to being big enough to be big enough for any varsity sport.
Right.
And if for a little, you know, for whatever more it would take to make it, since we're already spending so much money on this field.
Right.
For a little bit more money, you know, it just seems like.
Your assumption, well, hold on, folks, come on, let's put a point on, because we're sort of going in circles.
No, can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
Because I just, I just want to clarify what John's saying before you.
It's clear, I understand what John's saying, but his assumption is that it's just a little bit of money, and to, it's either we're going to have varsity games on the field or we're not. The size of the field is the size of the field, and if we're going to have varsity games on the field, we have ADA compliance, we have access compliance, we have bleachers, all of those things are not $30,000 issues.
Where does the ADA, where does the ADA compliant, what are the ADA?
Because you have to have, people have to have access to the field.
If you're making it a.
If you're making it for varsity sports.
Game field, it has to be handicapped.
It has to be, handicap people have to be able to access the field.
Only for varsity sports?
Well, it's just to get a varsity field, as we've always been told.
Right, not for a practice field.
Not for a practice field.
But what, let me ask you a question then. What if it's a practice field, but for whatever reason, you have to end up putting a game on there? If that happens, does it still have to be ADH compliant, or if it's really a practice field that you're just covering because of makeups, because of weather?
Yeah, that's a rich question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
If, if we designate a practice field, but we build it bigger, so just there's future flexibility, let's just leave it at that, then let's just say, due to weather, we have to reschedule, and as a result, we need to put a varsity game on the practice field. Is that allowed, or is that not allowed if it's not ADH compliant, ADA compliant?
I don't know if it's allowed or not allowed, it's the construction that's triggering the ADA. If we go to the village and say, we're going to cap this field and put it back in grass the way we are, it's one level of effort. If we're going to improve the field and start putting bleachers in or expanding, no, as an example, or expand the field and do what they perceive as improvements, and that's kind of subjective that they're going to make a call on, then they're going to say, well, we want you to do ADA improvements.
This would be the village that would.
No.
SED.
SED and the village, both. The village has said, if you're going to improve the field, we're going to push for ADA improvements. That was their initial stance, and then we said, well, we really want to just cap what's there.
The size is the size.
Address this environmental issue, and they said, okay, that's a different issue, so you don't need to do it.
You strike the field, the field's the field. We're not building any more field.
And typically, I started explaining to Dr. Harrison, is when I get asked a question like this, it's more than just, okay, let's push the field out. It's usually more involved with your facilities, your athletic department to say, what are your needs? Because it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. Do you want to meet the bleachers that you have in Mazarros? Do you want to do something different? Do you want concessions? Do you want restrooms? When you look at a.
Yeah, no, none of that, none of that, I would say, but.
Well, those things are typically what a facility may want for a varsity level sport, which is different than what you're asking for, which is simply, let's cut down some trees, let's do some grading, let's put in a wall and some padding, maybe, to get that extra distance.
So we have some, you know, for, so we have, for whatever that incremental cost may be, we have, you know, consider, we have flexibility about where we play games.
Yeah, and the only other thing that you got to be cognizant of, and remember, this all has to be looked at in the backdrop of what we found when we dug in East Field the first time, and part of the thing you're going to do then is you're necessarily calling for more excavation back there, which is what we're trying to avoid.
And we're going, I would.
This is a much larger issue, John, that's why I don't understand the, you know, because these things really have been considered, and the biggest issue with doing that would be the continued excavation and what we would find, and addition to remediation that could happen if we dig more back there. And that's why we're capping the field, and that's why we're going down the road of having to cap the field in the first place, is because the remediation that needs to be done. If you're going to go back there and say, well, let's just expand the field, optionality, blah, 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 that's not, that's not the end of the analysis.
That was part of the Field Committee's decision or rationale behind their decision to say, do not cut trees down, do not excavate and remove exceedances if you don't, if the E.C. doesn't require it, work with the capping solution that D.E.C. will accept that minimizes the risk of opening the can of worms.
Exactly right.
Of additional cost, opens the potential to stop the job in terms of schedule and timing. It was a conscientious discussion that the committee had.
Yeah, I was saying, you know, to say that it wasn't considered is all, it's just not, it's just not accurate.
I would respectfully say I'm not convinced.
You don't need to be, that's fine. I was there, I was part of the, I was part of the discussions.
John, I distinctly remember the discussion when we said that we were not going to enhance the field beyond its basic specification that exists today. We had that discussion, and the, my issue with your, let me finish, my issue with your question is not that it's an irrational question, it's just the timing of it is not ideal. It's far from ideal, and if we had never had that discussion before, then I would say it's bad on us, and we have to own that, and then we have to honor your request. The fact that we had the discussion before and you didn't bring it up then, it means, unfortunately, bad on you, because it's too late now. Timing matters.
I respectfully disagree with you, too. I think, you know, I, you know, the, I would have thought this was something that the Fields Committee would have considered, we didn't.
They did consider.
It's not evident to me that they considered it.
I think they considered it, because they were told that he was telling a baseline.
Yeah.
We didn't set anything up at that point. Like, we never, officially, there was never a baseline, that was just kind of a direction that the administration gave the committee. It wasn't that the board really, I don't remember the board coming up with the direction. I know that the, and I was fine personally, and I read it, it seemed to make sense as a direction, but to John's point, I got to say, it's not like it was an official board discussion.
Well, first of all.
We had more presentations than.
It was presented here, and I cannot see how the board would ever have put to a Fields Committee that was made up of people who aren't elected to the board and give that Fields Committee the right to possibly subject the district to potential liability for excavating more back there and give them that decision, John. That just never would have happened. So, you know, I think you have to look, you got to look at the totality of the discussion from East Field, going back to the initial plans and the fact of what we found when we did the core samples. You know, it has been discussed, you know, on many occasions, that it was determined in the best interest of the district not to dig further back on East Field, and instead deal with SED through capping it. So, you know, listen, I think, I think we got to bring this to a head. I'm not in favor of reopening that now. It is a board decision, I mean, I could pull the board and we can move on, you know, if I'm in the minority, that's fine, but to go back and say, you know, now cost out, you know, what it's going to take to start doing excavation and start looking down the road of, A, whether we want to subject the district to potential liability for digging around back there, you know, I do think, as Phil said, I think that dog's out of the door already. The board can, of course, open that up again if it wants to, but I'm not in favor of it. Robin?
To clarify for me, if we were to push the field, is what John's saying, to make it incrementally bigger, does that absolutely require excavation?
The, it's, I think the area we're talking about is an upwardly sloped area, which I think is maybe above the field, it's not, we're not going down, we're going, we're taking, which I think.
No, you go out before you hit that hill that's back by Riley's house. Riley's house is up there, that's a hill back there. You go out, there are trees in that area.
That's an answer.
And there's construction debris in that area.
Right. I don't know.
Because we tested through those areas, and there's construction debris there, so we'll be excavating construction debris, and I would say that.
I'm happy to go walk, you know, somebody wants to walk around with me out there.
Yeah, you could walk, listen, I think as a board, though, we got to make a decision, and so.
I don't have comfort on it.
That's, I understand.
I just don't. I mean, I think this is, this is a field that will last for, well, the oldies field lasted for how many, however many years.
Right.
This is, this is a field that we're, and it's going to be around for 40 years or something like that.
Right.
And I'd just like to be comfortable that we're getting it right.
Okay, I understand your point. Anybody else want to weigh in? I'm against opening this up.
Yeah, I also have three concerns doing that, because I think also you're, we're neighboring, and we need permission from our neighbors next door to complete this project, and I got to say, if you do that, I'm not so sure they're going to say yes, and you need their approval, too.
It's not just a no.
I know.
I don't think, we're not shocking about going in the field point direction, if that's what you're talking about.
Well, but you have to understand, if you're looking at the field, here's field point, and the pond is up there, that water travels that way. You're extending, you're going.
It looks like a match.
I get that you're putting in.
I don't think you're doing it there, I think it's on the other, on the other corner, actually. What I'm thinking of is the other corner, but I'm not sure.
Folks, please, I mean, I think, you know, we're kind of getting far afield, I mean, could we, could we take a poll, please? Oh, yeah, not to use a, I mean, Maria, I don't know if you.
I have to say.
Phil?